Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Robo-Go-Go with the greatest hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Susie.
Councilmember Campfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedow.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
Just a question, were we going to add discussion on the sewer water authority?
Yeah.
Item D under whole business?
It's on, it's already on there.
Okay.
All right.
Would that also for it?
Where is it?
Where is it?
Is that on there?
Also on the back page.
It's on the front page, front page. Oh, add it, it must have got missed.
Item. Is he under whole business?
I thought it was on there.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was on there, my mistake.
Any other changes? Motion in a second to approve as amended. Susie.
Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedow.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes. Sinister discussion for items not on the agenda? No? And a letter, Susie has.
Dear City Council of Lowell, we received our copy of the Lowell Ledger and Pastor Trevor Workman from our Nazarene church neighbor is on the cover asking the city council to change the ordinance or give the church an exception. I'm writing to ask you to please not do this. The noise complaints stemmed from an unannounced outdoor service with preparation, which preparation began for Saturday, June 13th. We were awakened with amplified music, save for occasional traffic noise. This is typically a quiet neighborhood. In addition to the Nazarene church members presuming we want to be blasted with their audio system, which was audible in a home with closed windows over top of normal radio volume. We also were subjected to listening to their performer sound check on Saturday. This was not a matter of assumed permission for a simple Sunday service. It took liberties turning it into an intimate all weekend affair. My husband, A.J. Dunning, a professional musician contacted the pastor and offered to assist reconfiguring their sound system so that the speakers would not be pointed directly at any of the adjacent residences, at least nine homes, and would allow for audibility for their attendees while reducing the volume of the overall system. Yet he refused. Now we hear he is trying to circumvent residents completely. I should also add that given the size of their congregation, I question the need for the amplification at all. During outdoor services, they could opt theater in the round, seating and satisfactorily accomplish their goal. The Nazarene church is not the only church affected by the pandemic. The First United Methodist Church has elected to hold their services on the River Rock Plaza, which is far enough away from the homes to satisfy any potential noise issues. Many have opted to host services online. A church should be a good neighbor just like other businesses. We have been respectful neighbors, not mowing our lawn on Sunday mornings to prevent noise during service, contacting the church regarding issues that might affect them such as a family of skunks living under the wheelchair ramp, a door left open at night, et cetera. If a neighbor were to contact me regarding similar complaints, as a respectful adult, I would offer my apologies and reduce the volume so as not to infringe upon the rights of others. I would also like to point out that as a 26-year resident of my home at 203 North Jefferson, I faithfully paid property taxes to the city of Lowell well into the tens of thousands of dollars, whereas the church is exempt and therefore has been, has paid none. I would like to think that my dollar vote should count for something. As long as we are on the, on the subject of money, we recently invested heavily in the remodeling of our home to have pride of our ownership marred by damage from the church lawn mower last summer. Repeated calls to the church went ignored and we have left, we have been left to pay for the repairs to rectify the situation at our own additional expense, including perforated screens, gouges, and brand-new paint jobs on the exterior. Needless to say, this has not been added to, added favor to our opinion of our Nazarene church neighbors. Lastly, but certainly of significance, I might address our First Amendment rights to freedom of religion. It is unconstitutional to expect us to be subjected to the amplified sounds of the sermon and song of their church. This is our home and it is unfair of Pastor Trevor to think that it is acceptable for us to be bullied by the church. Under the status quo, they are not being prevented from exercising their religion, they are simply prevented from amplifying it and disturbing the peace of others. If the shoe were on the other foot, I am quite confident that he would not appreciate being awakened by his neighbors doing the same. If the church was allowed an exception, this is discriminatory to the rest of us. If the noise ordinance is lifted, what is there to prevent anyone from demonstrating their opportunity to reciprocate with loud implication of their choosing? It is opening a Pandora's Box as precedent on acceptable use in an otherwise peaceful neighborhood. Any statute that provides more protection to commercial speech than to other forms of constitutionally protected speech is unconstitutional. And this is from Deborah "Diving" Dunning. She did not give an address.
A lot of summer, isn't it?
Yes.
Anybody else?
It was 203 North Jefferson.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Whole business, item A, MERS Actuarial, Mike.
Yep, I was asked to put this on the agenda tonight and I guess before we have a discussion from the last meeting, I kind of want to explain to you some of the things that I've been working on and my understanding of this problem, so maybe that'll help you understand what we're dealing with. So, I think the first thing I would do is if you noticed, if you noticed in the, in the actuarial report, I'm trying to get the page, but we had a significant decline for many, many years, back in around 2005, I'm sorry, around 2008, you were about 77% funded. It was about that time that the MERS, what they used to do was they would, they would take your, they wanted you to correct your unfunded liability in a 30-year period. However, for many years, to my understanding, they just rolled it to the next year. So it was kind of like a rolling, best way to explain it, a rolling mortgage with no, with no end date. So in 2008, they said, they said, they started this path that they wanted the, they wanted the, the unfunded liability addressed in 30 years. So basically 2038, 2039, somewhere in that area. And honestly, this issue was slowly chipped out, slowly the liability continued to, the percent funded continued to slowly go down. And when I came here in 2016, we started in 20, in 2018, we were through labor negotiations, we started to address the unfunded liability because what we did was we increased the employee's contribution from 5% to 7%. What that automatically does with MERS is it lowers our payment down, best way to explain it, 2%. So what we did was we continued, we continued to contribute as we were when the employees were contributing 5%. So basically, we were putting 2% of our payment in basically to a surplus fund to pay the debt down. So it was about $25,000 a year at the end of the year. So it was better than nothing, but obviously, this is an issue, this is a, this is an issue that none of us at this table created. And quite frankly, this is an issue that nobody's really done trying to address until the people at this table started chipping away at the problem. So my understanding was 15 years ago, the police union actually presented a plan at the time to close the pension plan and go to a defined contribution for, for new hires. This was 15 years ago and it never got, it never got addressed. So I know, and then the only other thing I can see in the, in the past is I noticed for a number of years, the city gave a COLA incentive every year. Well, that also increases your liability. And I believe since 2007, 2008, the city has not done that practice. So let's move on to this year coming up. So in 20, in 2021, our rate of return has to be reduced from 7.75% to 7.35%. And our payment, our payment is going to go from roughly 26.2% to about 30%. The general funds components, currently the general fund, well actually no, the city budget out of all, and I have spreadsheets showing this to you, but we, this year we budgeted approximately $369,474 of the city's total contribution to the unfunded pension liability. Next year, and actually, that was, that was a pre-calculation I gave you, it was a little bit less than that on paper. But of this, you know, this year, the way we, the way we break it down is the majority of that payment is made out of the general fund, about 62.5%, or say closer, closer to 63%, where about 22.5% of the payment annually is made out of the water fund. We track it by where the employees work, their time, and that's how we, that's how we determine the pension pay, the pension allocations. So what I've done over the, over the last, over the next 22 years, I've actually, you have three spreadsheets in front of you that shows the projection. The first projection that you would see in the three spreadsheets I give you is if we do nothing. This is what, this is what our payments would be for the, for the next, until 2043. That's if we do nothing. And if you notice, the pension, the payments go significantly higher until about 2039, to then when the payments start to go down to a, from $867,000 to $268,000. What this spreadsheet doesn't tell you is by doing that, your future liability goes from $10 million that you have today to roughly $18 million. Also, a little thing that I didn't want to really throw MERS under the bus about last week when they were here, but they tell you that every year you're supposed to get a 7.75% gain on your money. I can tell you, and Steve Donkerslute can tell you the same thing, and if you, if you look at our actuarial, we're only seeing about a 1.5% increase in our assets annually. So this 7.75%, and what is actually happening to us is there, I don't have a, I know Steve has asked the question many of times to them, and we've never gotten a good answer from MERS as to why it is what it is. So what I've also done is going forward, I know we want to get out of the, I know we want to get out of the, out of the pension plan for new hires. So we've done that already. We've, the two employees we've hired, they will go into a defined contribution.
Or they've leased a part.
Correct. They will go into a defined contribution, but we have to resolve everything across the city before they can actually be in a plan. So we're going to technically, what we're going to do, if we're going to hold them in abeyance basically, and when we get this corrected, we will correct the issue for them. But it will be, it will be a defined contribution. We've also not hired three positions in the public works, mainly because of the pension issue. So we're still working through all that. And the plan is, is to get these employees into a, into a new, into the new system. The problem you have is if you look at that second spreadsheet, when you close that plan, and you don't do anything to the plan for the current employees, if you do nothing for them, you're going to have the same contributions that you're going to have annually throughout the, throughout the, throughout the whole 20 years, but you're going to have additional funding because you're going to have two things. You're going to have to also fund annually the new people going into the defined contribution, and then you have to make up the payment for, there's a gap between what, what that, basically what that new employee, if they were in the pension system, would have been paying towards that unfunded liability. Well, you have to pay, you have to find a way to pay that. So if we actually did nothing to the, to the pension plan, our cost would be significantly higher. However, the liability, and I didn't give you the liabilities because we really need to, I'll have that recalculated by an actuary. So I don't, I don't want to commit to anything like that, but your, your liability will go down. And then if you, and if you look at the third, third spreadsheet, if we close the defined benefits plan and go to a 2.0 multiplier going forward, you're going to see that our costs go up slightly, but it's not nearly as bad as it would be at a 2.5 multiplier. And also, your liability would go down more by going to that plan because as you, as you have a less benefit going forward, it would, it would reduce your liability. But then on top of it, you also have no new liability because you're going, you're just going to fix the fine contribution cost. So, and understand that the second and third picked, uh, spreadsheets that I did, they're based, well actually, all of them are based on, the first one's based off of projections that we had. I had a number of scenarios ran about a year and a half ago, trying to solve this problem. And so it's going to take, it's a problem that's going to take us 20 to 30 years. But what you're actually on the path towards is 50 years from now, hypothetically, you should have zero pension liability, where if you don't close the plan, that $18 million 20 years from now might be $36 million 50 years from now. I don't know. So one of the things you're, you are doing by, by doing this is you are, you are, it's going to take a long time, but you are slowly, you are slowly, you are slowly closing that hole. And something to understand too is I know that number of $692,000 came about at the last meeting, and that is a true number. The only thing is about 200,000 of that, or about 250,000 of that I believe is covered by Light &amp; Power. Our payment next year is only going to be about, well, I'm not going to say only, because it went up, it's going to go up $53,000 from this year, but it's going to be approximately $420,000 next year. And figure, figure every, every, I mean, and I've said this before, every year for the next 15 years, you're going to see abruptly a $40,000 increase on that pension plan payment on average, regardless of what you do. So.
Is that number after takeout Light &amp; Power?
Yeah, I'm just talking about the city. I'm not talking about Light &amp; Power. I'm just talking about the city's end.
Is our timeline the same as MERS timeline with their numbers?
Yes.
Then why are the numbers so far, like at least $100,000?
What do you mean?
Well, they're showing that next year, our payments are going up 530,000. 250, it's going from 161 to 692. Now 250, that is Light &amp; Power.
No, no, our payment this year, our payment this year, I'm just going to calculate it.
Because next year they're saying.
Well, no, let me, let me, let me, let me try and explain it for you. Our payment this year is $30,533 a month times 12. So our payment this year is $366,396. That's what the city's paying out of all of our funds. And then the, what we would pay in 2021, it's $35,500, $5 a month times 12, it's $420,060. So it's roughly a $53,000 increase because of the fact that we're going, I mean, we would have that unfunded liability, but our rate of return's going down 4 tenths of a percent. So that's going to increase costs. So I don't know where this 190, I don't, I don't understand this 192,000 because I know, we've been paying more than 192,000 for a while. We played, I mean, last year the city paid, I'm going to pull it up, the city paid significantly more last year. And yeah, the city paid last year, our unaudited, our unaudited amount is, the city paid $359,000 last fiscal year. And.
So their numbers are wrong in what we've been paying?
No, because we've been going off their percentage. I don't, I guess you'd have to show me what you're looking at.
Well, on page eight, the one we put up at the last meeting on the screen, it shows employers' normal cost of 161, 796. And then payment of, in this, Light &amp; Power, and then payment of the unfunded liability is additional 530, and gets us to 692.
Right.
But that's also based on their 7.34% return.
Correct.
And it's somewhere between 2 and 4% historically.
Right.
It's, it's worse than the numbers look.
Oh, oh, yeah, they're overinflating their values. I totally agree with you.
Are we forced, is that our only option for retirement?
What do you?
Is legislated that our retirement accounts have to be with MERS?
No. However, the one thing is you're caught, you're, you have nowhere else to go. You'd have to form your own pension plan, which would create other issues for you. The cop, the pensions are constitutionally protected by Michigan law. So whatever you earn, invest it, we can, the only way that should be taken away is through bankruptcy. And a US bankruptcy judge would have to take that away. And the only place that's ever happened is in Michigan is Detroit. We're nowhere near that at this time, and I don't, I don't think we will be. But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to look at the, I mean, I'm looking at, you're looking at page, I, I don't, where are you getting this 192?
It's on the MERS.
It's on the, page, it's on the MERS.
Right. So you've always, you've been paying this unfunded liability for quite some time. That's not new. You've paid that, you've been paying unfunded liability quite some time.
Right.
Yeah. You, you, the 161, okay, yeah, that is your true normal cost if you didn't have an unfunded liability. The 530, that's your unfunded liability.
Which we're already paying another 100-ish towards it or 150?
We're paying, well, we're paying right now, our total payment to MERS, our total payment to MERS right now is.
366.
360 something?
Yeah, 366. That excludes everything.
Just the city or Light &amp; Power?
That's just the city. I only deal with the city. Light &amp; Power deals with Light &amp; Power.
Okay.
I only deal with the city.
And I just, the numbers don't add up.
No, they're, and it's, and it's confusing. It's very confusing.
I'm trying to catch up with, they're telling us the money's returning 7.34%, and you're saying when Steve Donkerslute looks at it, the return is 1.5%?
Well, they, they blend it over five years.
Right.
And somewhere in this report, it says the last five years, last year they made 13%, but when you blend it with the last five years to smooth out the peaks and valleys, it's actually 4.4.
Right.
But if they had 13 last year and they're averaging 4.4, they had some negative here.
Yeah, and they have, and they have, and that is the problem. I can tell you that this is the same conversation cities across the state are having, is that they've overinflated their values for years and they won't admit it. And it's creating problems for all of us because what you're seeing is, what you're seeing is on paper, it's one number, but in reality, it's another number. So it makes you think, well, okay, yeah, you say on paper we're going to be 100%, but the fear is you're never going to be at that 100%.
That's correct.
And so.
Mary.
And you're throwing those out. So I believe that MERS has said, you know, over the last 10 years, that their, their prediction was between 8 and 7%. Well, over the last 10 years, it's been 4.4. They might be giving you five, or five year, whatever. And again, I'm getting a lot of mind here from Steve. Everybody knows Steve and how we do this stuff. And so my disappointment, so Low Light Power certainly have more funding than what the city does, or is more flush than the city, however you want to look at it. So we've put together a plan that we will be in five years, 100% funded. And some of that has to do with some of the people that are, Steve's, as everybody else is going to a new position. And so that's going to alleviate some of the retirement and some of the different things. But we, as a board of Low Light Power, we have gone to the time benefits. And so the disappointing part is the city council, I think they need to take action and get a plan of how to get out of this liability. Because in a few years, if you look at the numbers, one out of every $3 of tax is going to go to retirement. Are we ever going to be able to fix the roads, pay for things when, when we're doing that? And the sooner that you go to a defined benefits package.
It's actually a defined contribution.
Define, excuse me, defined contribution, I think, the sooner that the city council will look at, at an endpoint to be fully funded. And certainly, I realize it'll be longer than five years, but, but right now, with what MERS history is, you're never going to get there. You're never going to get there with the plan that you currently have. So I think the city council and the city administration are going to make this, their priorities to get done. Because I don't see, you know, I know one of the priorities is get the city streets and everything else. But if we're constantly putting one out of three tax dollars, $1 going to MERS, the city's just going to keep deteriorating.
Yeah, we're, I mean, this is something, obviously, we, we still have a contract we got to settle. So we settle that until you can really put the plan in place. But I mean, this is something we spent, I spent a lot of time on over the last year and a half, two years. And it's, it's the number one thing, number one thing I see. But I mean, as of right now, I mean, yeah, it's not a good situation, but we've been able to manage it. One of the things you may want to consider as, as a fiscal policy for the council is at the end of the, end of the fiscal year, every year since I've been here, we've had about $100,000 revenues over expenditure that we've been able to put into the fund balance. Now, there was a day that fund balance was only around $20,000. Today, that fund balance is closer to $1 million. So we're about 33% funded at this point. So we're in pretty good shape with fund balance. We have never touched, basically, for a better way to explain it, we've never touched the rainy day fund since I've been here. And this year, surprisingly, and I'm not even including what we, what we get from, from the COVID reimbursements, Sue Ol and I looked at it the other day, we project that that revenue over expenditures this year is going to be much higher than $100,000. What I would suggest or maybe recommend to the council is rather than keeping to build up the fund balance, because I think you're in okay shape at this point, our fund balance policy says we're required to keep 15% of our general fund revenue, and we're at 33%. So we're, we're in a position where, would I like that to be closer to 40%? Yeah. But I think we're in a position where we can start taking whatever we use, whatever revenue that we end up generating at the end of the year that we don't spend, taking that money and putting down as basically as a principal payment on the pension fund. If you do that, and I don't, I don't, I have an idea what the number is, but until the auditor confirms it, I don't really, I'm not comfortable sharing it because I don't want to, I don't want to be wrong. But I still think that even not including the reimbursements we would get from COVID, I think we'd be in good shape. And quite honestly, even this year, from what I've seen so far, well, we're, what I've seen so far is I think our projections for revenue that we, I mean, we balanced our budget this year, and we, for the budget we approved, it's, you know, we balanced it. And I don't see anything at this point, and we've reduced, and we reduced about $140,000 in revenue out of the general fund. And I don't, I don't, I see us, I don't see us going less than that right now. There's nothing that I've seen two months, you know, two months into the fiscal year that really concerns me about that. So I look at our budget now and I think we're, it's not great, but we're managing it. And we're not, and we're not dipping into the fund balance. So those are things that I think once the audit comes back and we, we have a better handling as to what that number is, I think as a policy decision, you may want to just start thinking about just putting that money, whatever we get at the end of the year, general fund-wise, and putting that down towards pension liability.
Mike, since you brought it up, is it possible, maybe not at the next meeting, but the following meeting, the next one where we are at the budget year-to-date?
Sure.
I think that's a great idea to do that. I still have some huge concerns about where our revenue stream is going to go because the economy is chugging along somewhat normally and it shouldn't be. All this free money that's going out, people have gotten, played the stock market, artificially inflated that value. I think 30% of the economy is turned off right now and there's no way that this can continue.
No.
It's going to get ugly.
It could.
It, it may be six months later than we thought. Just, there is going to be some hard times coming. And as I've said the last few months, I just, anything we can do to freeze. And as I've said the last few months, I just, anything we can do to freeze spending and any positions that we don't have to place, and I understand, and I wasn't being critical, I, I recognize we had approved those positions, but, and like the dispatcher, that had to happen. But we've talked about being able to operate four days a week with 20% less labor. Maybe we need to look at one or two positions that we can hold off on hiring. Your answer, that's your decision.
Right, and, and at this point, I mean, like I said, I did come back with you last year. I mean, there's two positions we could, well, now with the new, new Lake and Power director, we could, we could, you know, we could mesh, you know, we could look at eliminating those positions. Those are more city hall positions. So we could, you know, we could revisit that. Those are, those are options you could do. The other, the other thing is, you know, it's, it's going to be the least popular decision, but your significant cut would be, and I'm not, and I'm not advocating, I will never advocate for this, but the police department and sheriff's contract, you're paying about $890,000 in general funds, and the contracts are coming to Lake Cedar Springs at 656.
Right, and that's what I see coming, and I'm trying to avoid that.
Right, I understand. I'm not, I'm not saying you should do it.
Right.
I'm not saying, I'll never advocate for that, but I'm just saying that on paper, that does two things. One, it's a general fund expenditure. The other thing is it is a significant pension liability. And that would be, that would be a rate. I'm not advocating for it, but understand that on paper, it would, it would alleviate your situation.
It would create 100 new situations.
I don't disagree.
I would never support it.
And I'm not saying positions need to be eliminated, but maybe we just postpone hiring for six, eight months till we see how this shakes out.
And we, and as I've said, we, we have, we created a position budgetarily last fiscal year we didn't fill in the DPW. And there's two positions, two people who've retired that we have not filled in the DPW. And I'm, I'm not looking to fill those right now, obviously, so.
Yeah, my goal is to preserve the police department.
And I, and I think, and so is mine.
Anybody else?
I like.
Oh, sure, now the numbers guide blocks. Talking about MERS.
Not so much. I like the idea of if we have double what we're supposed to have stashed away, then taking a bite out of it, out of the long-term liability, instead of continuing to build up the rainy day fund.
No, I think that's a great idea, Mike has, to plunk in all the extra this year. You know, we can see where we go.
We take it not a year-by-year crisis, not just a blanket policy.
Right.
We got it, let's put it there.
Yeah, because if you look at your list, in 20 years, we're back to a very manageable. No. Only the MERS, only the MERS, right, as a seven or eight percent. But if we had a basketball, we would know that, and we don't. So you have to go by the numbers we have.
Right, and, and understand these, I guarantee you, my projections are probably higher than what they actually will be. I'm basically only, I mean, if, if you look at my first spreadsheet, that was the one that I had the best information on. It showed us going from a 7.75 to a 7.0 in fiscal year 27. Honestly, you're probably at some point, you're going to be about 5.5%, which, that's going to be bad. But I think what MERS is going to end up having to do, and I've already, and I've already talked to MERS about this, is that 30-year goal of that unfunded liability, they're going to have to rethink that. Because it's, it's what it's going to do, it's going to, I mean, it's going to cripple communities. And two, it's kind of a, from what I understand, it's kind of an arbitrary number. Because even with the money we have in this, we can pay the pensions now. And as long as, as long as they're continuously refilling, the pensions are going to, the pensions are going to be paid. But it's.
Who came up with the, you got to have X number of years, was that the legislature, or was that MERS?
You mean percent expanded?
Yeah, I mean, who, you said it, it kind of changed in a 30-year plan after 2008, was that done?
No, that was a MERS decision. That was a MERS decision.
So they just click, pick, you got to have 30 years paid for.
But here's my problem with MERS. Communities like us were not 100% for a period of time before that. What I don't understand, and this is before my time, so I don't, I don't have any answers, but I don't understand why, A, the city at the time didn't look at it, but B, more importantly, why MERS never came to us and said, hey, you need to get back to 100%. Why do they, I don't understand why they allowed it. And that, that's all before my time, so, you know, and, and, you know, it seems like it wasn't until 2008, 2009 when MERS, you know, from what I understand, that MERS really started looking at the problem.
Because people probably in the recession finally started asking them about an actual rate of return and got a different number than they were given.
Right. You mentioned plugging along, but last year we paid out twice as much as we took it from their report. And that's not sustainable.
No, I agree. Yeah, I, I see that, but.
So it's great that we're talking about it and doing everything we can, but just my, my point last week was, let's try to minimize our spending as much as possible.
Right.
We have to keep this in front of us. We just can't.
And we have to get to defined contributions.
Right, and, and we're, we're almost there. So we're obviously, we've already settled it with, with the police union, and obviously, we can automatically do it with the non-unions. We're, we're still working on it.
Yeah, leave it at old business, and then if we gap the pass, it will just pass it, or at least it's in front of us.
Okay, sure.
Item B, showboat fundraising.
Okay, this has changed somewhat since we met on Tuesday. We are no longer going to be asked by the committee to consider financing. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Mont, and Mark Mont's going to explain what's going on.
I'm going to take my mask off if you don't mind, and you waited long enough that I'm completely blind. Yeah, thank you. I liked it better when you guys sat on this side. So you guys, since we met on, oh, yeah, thank you, Chris. Since, I'm good though, thank you. Since we met on Tuesday, the committee met on Thursday. We have 17 members currently on the committee, and they're pretty much all recognizable names from the Lowell area. These were all Hantik volunteers that quickly stepped forward and agreed to help us with this because they believe in the project. The committee met, we discussed naming opportunities, we had a list already, we brainstormed a few more ideas, and we're working towards putting the final touches on that. We also discussed individuals and businesses in the greater Lowell area that we felt like could step up and be larger donors to the cause. And, and members raised their hands and volunteered to contact those people. But if you haven't heard from them yet, don't be excited, you're still probably on the list. Because we haven't, we're not actually going out yet. The next thing we did was, we had somebody, we had two of our members step up to do forms and brochures. Actually, that was Liv volunteering her and her staff. So we want to put those forms and brochures together before we actually go out and visit people. We also had two people step up to be PR persons, so we can start doing a better job of sharing information with the community. It was a great, great meeting, and we've already had people come to the chamber to drop off checks for donations. And so, so in the middle of the building, people are seeing the vision of what that vote is going to be, that it is going to be a, probably one of the finest assets that this city has. And I'll tell you right now that you can thank the Chamber of Commerce 100% for bringing that here. They're the ones that spearheaded the committee, that brought the committee together and moved it forward from, from Ivan's vote that needed to be replaced to what you see sitting over there today. And it's just only going to get better when they start painting it next week. Our next meeting is Thursday, August 27th at 6, 7 o'clock, right here. And I would like to invite any of the council members that would like to join our committee to please be there in attendance. You are welcome.
What time, Mark?
7 o'clock, Thursday, August 27. It's the city's asset, and if you want to put some skin in the game, come on down. That's all I got. Would they have anything to lose?
Thank you for that article, too. That was a really, really good read.
You're welcome.
Well, good. Item C is the fireworks stuff.
The Chamber of Commerce is asking the city of Lowell to consider allowing for a drive-in fireworks display event. I met with them last Tuesday and suggested we speak to you regarding this. They are planning on holding the event on Saturday, October 10, 2020, in the evening. They would like to have the fireworks on the same location as they do always and allow for drive-in opportunities at Stony Lakeside Park on the fairgrounds. I know we had an event in July at the fairgrounds that went relatively smooth, and at the time, I suggested to them that, but I would want the council to look into this. I had Jessica Wood look into this matter, and she weighed in. She said that being an outdoor social gathering or an organized event among people not part of the same household, it would be subject to the limitations of Executive Order 2020-160. Accordingly, it may not exceed 100 people. Technically, the inside of the vehicle is considered indoor, so each vehicle cannot exceed 10 people, think like party buses or the like. At all times, even with outdoors, people not part of the same household must maintain six feet of distance from one another during the event. Given that this event is outdoors, no mask is required unless people are unable to consistently maintain a distance of six feet or more from individuals who are not members of their household. There is a potential this event could be larger than 100 people, and could be difficult to enforce. That said, it still might be possible to have the event if the executive orders are followed. I'm asking the council what they would like to do about this.
We have fireworks every year, and it's never large groups all in one place. They're spread out. People have parties at their house. We sit behind the fire station, 20 maybe of us. People go down to the beach. There's hundreds of different places. You're going to shoot them off from the boat launch where you always shoot them off from?
Yeah, yeah.
For the Riverwalk fireworks?
About.
Yeah. You're not going to get 100 people in one location. There's going to be a party at Mark and Teresa's probably. I'm going to Mark and Teresa's. I don't care.
One raiser for the show.
But you're not going to get 300 people at the fairground. You're not. Most people need something like this.
What we learned at the, the high hell down there was you can't social distance people at the fairs. And it worked flawlessly. It took us a long time to figure it out. But it is a system now that we've got figured out, and it, you know, it works. It took us four hours to figure it out, but we, we've got that down pat, out of place, out of set, and it works good.
Most of those are owed in parts of Valley Vista and all that stuff you come up with from your garden. They're usually pretty visible down that stretch of Main Street. I don't think you're going to get 300 people at the fairgrounds all huddled up. I just don't think you're going to do it.
I think a lot of people will go by your parking lot tree.
Yeah.
You can hang out at, they've got a nice parking lot.
Ooh, what about the bridge across the grand?
That'd be awesome.
And that's in the township. Don't worry. No, I don't see any reason not to do it.
That's a premium. Have your chairs up there?
Charge a premium for that with the money on to the show.
Are you going to, are there going to be food trucks showing up or not, or what are you planning on?
Yeah, we will have a couple food trucks. We always do. We usually have one down at Stony Lakeside, and we always have one at the fairgrounds.
Any way to tie in what, because you had Main Street and.
Yeah, we had Main Street, Sneakers, we had Kona Ice, we had the Pop Farm Gack, I can't remember his name.
Kona Ice shows up everywhere.
Yeah, again, when we, bringing food vendors into an area where you can't have people be, again, we learned in a real fast hurry how to change it and make it flow 100% better. But that was withheld from the vendors themselves, saying, if we change it and we do it this way, we think we can get a better flow and give it a lot nicer, so.
We're, we're planning on doing harvest celebration at the Asbro's, and some, you know, arts and crafts. We're looking, we're truly cooking off the heat that we wanted to start with. So we're looking at a new way of doing that as well. Where there isn't, and yes, the restaurants participate in it, so it's a session. So which is kind of nice because it's, it's a small, that sort of thing. I'm not sure about the arts and craft show, you know, that's something that we'd be favorable to if they still wanted to do that. The harvest festival and that, we have, we have that to do. I want to keep it low key, like, work it on main, and just have fun.
So are we looking for a project or?
Yes, well, and eventually, too, we had planned that, but we decided that so she'd have that to, to do for the Riverwalk. And then we get to sign that.
Do we want to make that motion?
I will. Support it.
Sure.
Okay.
Board.
Susie.
Mayor DeVore?
Yep.
Councilmember Salzito?
Yes.
Councilmember Yevgenich?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Item D, water and sewer, Michael.
Yes, so we have met with Mark Beauchamp. Mark Beauchamp is very well-known in the utility billing industry. And we have asked him to provide us a proposal, I believe the city, a turning study to you today. Basically, what we're, what we're asking him to do is review the feasibility study for the capital costs, bounty costs, operational and maintenance costs, along with administrative costs. We're also asking them to run models, run financial analyst models on construction for the Lowell Township facility and identifying the impact on the city of Lowell's water and wastewater system, water rates, should Lowell Township construct their own system. They've developed a work plan and, and, and a billing cycle for us. We anticipate, after talking to them further, we had a further conference call today, we anticipate this cost will not exceed $15,000. And it will, we can split that cost between the water and the sewer funds if you so, if you so choose. We can split it 50/50. I'm recommending that we do retain them to help us with this, if this is what you are looking for.
They're going to give us both ways, right? If everybody gets along and we do this, it would bring in this potentially cost this much. If they leave us and form their own, it's going to take this much revenue away.
Yeah, we looked at all, we're going to look at all the scenarios that presented in the study.
Did they give you an idea of the timeline to get this done?
Um, I can still verify that. I think they said that once they got the first, the first models done, it would be relatively quick. I got it thinking about two, three months at the most, but I can verify that in response.
That probably won't work. Lowell Township, you know, we're supposed to fast-track this thing. It's been two months, and Lowell Township is about to make a move.
Right, well, I just literally was directed a month, a month ago to do this. And, I mean, they were on vacation, and I was on vacation, so it wasn't even till last week that we connected.
But I don't think there's a point in spending $15,000 if they're moving down, down the road without us.
Okay.
I think we should probably reach out to Jerry tomorrow.
Okay.
And find out, but I don't think that, if we could have something within 30 days, I'd support it. But I think past that, they are at the point that they need to move on.
I agree.
I personally, I think, any more than six weeks, then there should be no reason the numbers can't come back in that time period.
And I can clarify that with them.
Okay. Uh, new business ability we've requested, Mike?
Yep, we've been requested by Eric Barkus to consider a Rose Close.